Good evening, everybody. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the city council meeting on November 4th. We have a quorum if you can join me in the pledge of allegiance. Item three is the public forum. At this time, the public is permitted to address the council on items not appearing on the agenda. Comments may not exceed five minutes. In accordance with state law, however, no action or discussion may take place on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. The city council may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may request staff to report back at a future meeting on the matter. Would anyone care to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Hearing nobody will move on to item four, the city manager's report.
Good evening, council. Few updates, if I can hide this. Yeah, so in terms of roadways, I guess one thing I've noticed, A C T C is going to start taking applications for projects. It's going to go for several months, but they're going to start in January. And then obviously, big election tomorrow night on our local cell stacks, which will impact our streets. Tonight, you know, we're going to do a review of Q1 budget. Also, this last weekend, we started no kind of scheduled overtime over weekends. Last week, we kicked off the new financial software integration. And again, that's going to take probably five or six months. But, you know, we started a process. They have a really good, I think, change management process. They're kind of walking us through. And then also met with the act director last week, and, you know, we have a new contract. And based on the revenue, the pool generator, we're actually going to get a check for $15,000 back, which I don't think we've gotten in the past. So that will help pay for chemicals and operating the pool. It's not, it's not all found money. There's cost to operate the pool, but that's nice. In terms of wastewater plant planning, again, we've been pulling together data, and we're pretty close to having what we need to send to California I Bank. Again, just for them to tell us how much money we think we could potentially borrow. And then last week, we also had to check in with the water board on their water balance letters. I think everybody, ION, CDCR, us, we're all making progress, and things seem to be going smoothly. So those first response letters are due mid-December. I think we're on track to deliver ours. And then picture, picture of the mural going up on Main Street. Hopefully, you guys all saw that. There's also this new business called the Leadership Hub on Main Street. I went and visited last week. They're doing executive coaching, and then they also have like a executive boardroom where companies can do retreats. So they're trying to get companies from Sacramento, for example, to come have an all-day meeting, to go across the street for lunch, come back. So looks like a nice addition to Main Street. And then I'm continuing to talk to the, talk to the Sierra jobs first people. Their initial pilot grants are open and have to be submitted by December 15th. So working with Andrew Gardner, I'm potentially submitting one for the city of Sutter Creek to help companies get started. Sorry. And then there were several police department arrests in the last couple of weeks. First one was arson suspect. There was a fire lit, actually, in Councilmember Swift's building at top of the hill. They did arrest the individual. I think they got him on video. And then over the weekend, I think there was a lot of postings on Facebook about a domestic violence issue. And again, I think our police force did a great job. They called in assistance from other agencies, and the individual was arrested early the next morning. And then there was another case recently where an elderly woman had gone missing. She had dementia, apparently, so there was a lot of concern, but they were able to find her. So I just wanted to highlight some of those things that have been going on. Yeah.
That domestic violence incident was right across the street from my house. Just want to give a hat tip to the...
Hat tip to our PD for responding so quickly and making an arrest subsequently.
Thanks. When you're going to hear, we have the fire chief here tonight to update us on several recent fires. I think you're all aware, there was a fire at Gateway Park as well, which was put out pretty quickly. Continue to look for intern staff to help out with some of the open positions right now. We're also processing several subdivision applications, which you will be hearing about as they make their way through the process. Also had some complaints about speeding on Randolph. And I've been talking to the school superintendent. We've had police out there. We've had police volunteers out there. Doesn't appear that there's really a speeding issue, but we're going to keep monitoring.
Your mic? Yeah, I heard it click.
Okay. I don't know, but my voice dropped a lot. Also, Mason and I attended our quarterly risk management meeting, I guess, a week ago, Friday in Fresno. It sounded like it was going to be very boring, but I actually learned some things. So it's definitely worth going. And then we had our first witches walk. It was, I think, was extremely popular and positive event. And then Dan and I went up and kind of walked around the Eureka Mine site. We've been working to do weed debatement up there, but it was also kind of a chance, I think, to really look around the property some more. And I don't know if all of you have walked around up there. You know, the site, the picture in the middle row there is the mine head, which is, you know, what you typically see. You can see, we took out some trees and all the weeds up there. But then if you go behind the fence, it's actually quite a nice area. It seemed like it could be a really nice kind of rustic park with a, with a pathway down to the, the old stamp mill, which is the, kind of the redwood timbers over there. And there's some really nice views up there as well. So it just got me kind of excited about trying to find funds to turn this into a more usable space. It looks like a lot of the work has been completed in terms of remediation. There's like probably about $25,000 of paperwork left to do, and that's what's kind of holding us up. But I just wanted to kind of highlight that.
Twenty-five thousand paperwork?
Yeah, it's kind of ridiculous. In terms of upcoming events, you know, a lot of holidays coming up. Plaid Friday right after Thanksgiving, and then there's, I guess, a small business open house the day after that. Then we have our tree lighting, La Pasada's and Festival of Lights. And then basically have two meetings, yeah, two meetings left this year. Working hard to bring the capital improvement plan to you guys at the next meeting. Also, it's kind of a discussion about the short-term rental policy. I think I told you guys, we hit about 20 units. And I think you'd asked in the past to come back to council when we reached that threshold. And again, still planning to cancel that last meeting in December unless something pops up that's urgent. Right? That's it.
Tom, for the Eureka Mine, I think I mentioned this to you, and Jem and Julia might remember. When we were looking for funds to do the sinkhole in the Boytano lot, Amy Gedney had let us know that there's a lot of money to be had by mining companies and grants for mining cleanup type stuff. Do you remember that, Derek?
That's the abandoned mine unit?
I'm not sure, but...
Yeah, I think I directed her to that. There's a...
Yeah, that might be somewhere we can look for some help with Eureka Mine.
Yes.
Does it ring a bell, Jim?
Yeah, it does.
We thought we were going to get the sinkhole paid for.
Right.
But it has to be, it has to be, it's, it's the, it has to be an abandoned mine.
That's what that is, isn't it?
Okay, all right. I think so. Yeah. Yeah. I can, I can work with Tom, because I directed Amy to that before.
We own it, but it's abandoned.
Yeah.
Hey, Tom. I just wanted to, I was wondering on the ACTC business, has WGA been given the direction now to go back and scrub all of those bids to reflect?
Yeah.
Are agreed upon moving forward?
Yeah, and again, we were the, I didn't realize, we were the very first project under this new ACTC board directive to only do pavement-ready projects. Talking to WGA, I mean, Caltrans has a different definition, and they were kind of following that. And the issue is kind of what expenses will be, will be reimbursed, and kind of when does construction start? So, and then there's another issue, which I don't think ACTC's ever had to address, which is, okay, you know, they want to fund projects to completion. We completed our project, you know, for, and we came in under budget. So in that case, you know, would they consider covering more of the planning costs?
Right.
So, you know, we had, we had planning costs, we had the cost to do the RFP, we had costs to locate utilities, all of which they disallowed. So basically, we're arguing it's new process that they should consider reimbursing those.
So I'm going to a meeting with those fellows on Thursday. So I'll be bringing up those issues. And it seems to me reasonable that since this is the first one, and all these things were not completely and, you know, clearly identified upfront, and the bid was accepted as, you know, submitted originally, and we were awarded that money. You know, I'm confident that we'll be able to get some of that money back.
Yeah. Or again, if you come in under, maybe, maybe they could have a policy that you manage your project within what they allocated, you could recover planning costs.
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Brings us to a presentation. We've got Dominic here and Antonio from the fire department.
So we had, the proclamation was there.
Oh, whoops, sorry. First, I'm going to read a proclamation recognizing Karen Darrow for her service to the city. Did Karen join us on Zoom?
I don't think she was able to, but she was appreciative.
All right. Well, we'll be sure to send this to her. This is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Sutter Creek, recognizing city clerk Karen Darrow and honoring her many accomplishments on behalf of the city of Sutter Creek. Whereas Karen Darrow was hired as city clerk in January of 2014 and promoted to administrative services supervisor in 2019. Karen has distinguished herself from the start as a competent and collaborative employee. And whereas Karen performed the duties of city clerk, including minutes and agendas, public records requests, record management, and election functions. As city clerk, she successfully managed and coordinated multiple city commissions. And whereas over her years with the city, Karen's position grew, and she took on increasing responsibilities, including human resources, benefits, insurance, and risk management and administration of the city cemetery. And whereas Karen helped develop and manage the city's website and social media, she was instrumental in launching the city onto the web and using these platforms for public engagement and marketing purposes. And whereas Karen helped market Sutter Creek as an attraction for visitors and oversaw seasonal decorations, Karen always showed care and concern for our town's appearance. And whereas Karen demonstrated creativity and ingenuity during and after the COVID pandemic to sustain some business in town, and was a driving force behind establishing both a temporary and permanent outdoor ordinances, outdoor dining ordinances. And whereas Karen worked with the police chief to rewrite and update the city personnel handbook, an endeavor that took substantial time and commitment. And whereas Karen has been welcoming and supportive to new staff members and her depth of knowledge regarding city business was an asset for staff and council. And whereas Karen has had a tremendous impact on the city of Sutter Creek, our businesses, residents, and employees, and we are collectively better off for having her serve this community. And now therefore be it resolved, I Mayor Claire Gunzelman, on behalf of the city council, citizens and employees of the city of Sutter Creek, do hereby issue this proclamation to Karen Darrow in recognition of her many achievements. We congratulate Karen for a job well done and wish her continued success and happiness.
Mayor, I just want to say how much I always enjoyed working with Karen and, and really appreciated all the help that she gave me many times.
Okay, Dominic and Antonio, or?
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for allowing us to come in, make a presentation. We're going to try to keep it as quick as we can. What we're going to try to do is just give you a little update on what's been going on the last about month and a half. Instead of creepy, we've had a little uptick in fires and things like that. So we're trying to give you a little background on these fires, just to see, give you an idea of what we do and how we do things. So I'm going to let Antonio start doing these. He's actually the one that made these up. He does them on every time we have a fire. Of any consequence, he'll actually make these up for us.
Good evening, Antonio Moreno, volunteer battalion chief, Sutter Creek Fire. What this is, is what we call an after-action review, and is designed for us as the fire departments, for our folks that were on the fire and those folks that were not on the fire. That's also for, for available for other agencies that participated in there, so we can review what happened, how it went. And then we also, in the end, talk about what went right, and things that we could do better next time. So I'm going to go ahead and present the first one, which is the main incident, which was the, the old Sutter Creek, Sutter Greek Restaurant on Main Street. You want me to just tell you when to click? Okay, or do you have a clicker? Okay. All right. So the location, as everybody probably knows, right there on the corner of Main Street and Randolph Street. That right there is just a picture of the old 1895 Sanborn Fire Insurance Map. It's our understanding, the building that burned down was built right around 1896. So obviously, it appears that something happened between 1895 and 1896 that caused the building that's there not to be there anymore. And I believe there was a fire around that time that heavily damaged part of Sutter Creek. Next slide. So talk about, a little bit about the building construction. It was built again in 1896. It's about 3,200 square feet. It's a two-story mixed occupancy. What we refer to in the fire service as a taxpayer, where you have businesses on the first floor, and then you have renters on the second floor, which help pay for the cost of the property taxes for the business. It had a restaurant inside, a beauty salon, as well as apartments upstairs, in which there was one occupant for one of the apartments. It is what we refer in the fire service also as wood balloon frame construction, which is an older-style construction of a building, whereas there's no fire blocking in the, in the wall studs. So a fire that starts in the attic can drop all the way down to the basement and vice versa. Something in the basement can travel all the way to attic. It's not designed like the newer platform-style construction that we see today. It had wood lap siding on it. The roof was skip sheeting, which means that it's just, you have a nailer board, it's like a one-by-four, with a space of air with another nailer board, and it was really designed for either shingle or, in this case, tin to miniell down. So there's a very, there's no wood sheeting in terms of plywood or OSB or anything like that up there. And down on the bottom, I just have a quote from Francis Branigan, who's a well-known author and fire service personnel in the fire service from decades ago. And one of the things he used to say is, "The building is thy enemy, know thy enemy." He was a big, big proponent of building construction, and that firefighters should know their building construction, because it really dictates how the fire travels through there. And we can talk about that here in a little bit. Next slide. This is really quick, just a rough floor layout of the floor plan of the building. The bar area, the dining areas. You can see the kitchen and storage cooler areas towards the rear of the area, where we believe the fire may have started in that area. And then on to the right, you have the salon, which was kind of an addition on to the existing building over time. Next, second floor, three apartments upstairs. And of those, the major damage was to that lower left-hand side. In the fire service, we also use terms to help us communicate on the fire ground. So you'll see an A, B, C, D, and you'll see me reference also Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Delta in this presentation. And that's when we stand at the front of the structure, for identification purposes, when we communicate, that would be the Alpha side, and going clockwise around would be Bravo. Charlie would be the rear, Delta would be the right side. So just to explain a little bit about that. Next slide. And this is the cellar. Cellar was fairly small. It didn't take up the entire floor plan of the, the main building floor itself, but they did have some storage, et cetera, down there that they used that service, that area for. Next slide. Okay, so NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, has standards out there. One of the standards they have is 1710. 1710 is the response time standard for career fire departments. Now, they also have a 1720, and we'll get into that, which is for volunteer departments. Sutter Creek is a combination department. We have one paid personnel on duty during most of the time, when we have an extra body on during the week. Otherwise, it's volunteer. So it's really hard to meet some of these standards, but I want to compare what we did compared to what this standard here, which is for paid departments. So what they recommend is that the response time for the fire department, once it's received, the turnout time, which is the time that I receive it, and I get wheels rolling in the fire engine, is about one minute and 20 seconds, is what they're looking for a national standard at. It also goes on to say that they want to have the first engine arriving on scene within four minutes maximum, and eight minutes for the first full alarm assignment. Now, for us, for this assignment commercial, we're going to get five engine companies, a truck company, and two chief officers to this assignment. In this particular case, so if you look at this, the first engine company with turnout time and response time should get on scene within six minutes. And from the receipt of the alarm, that's the time that we are dispatched, not the time that the dispatch center receives the alarm. And 10 minutes for the first full alarm assignment. Next slide. So right here, you'll show, the red is the first unit arriving unit, and that was engine 6433. And they arrived in four minutes and 32 seconds from time of dispatch. And the dispatch call came in at midnight 53 in the morning. So that's a really good response time for our personnel to get on scene. The next person on scene was Chief 6300, who's just moved into the Valley View area. So he was on scene in about eight minutes. And then it goes on down through there. The yellow and red identify the 10-minute mark that we're trying to hit with NFPA standard 1710. And you can see in that case that we had one, two, three, four engine companies and two chief officers on scene. So we were shy of one engine and one truck company for that assignment. Truck was coming out of ION, so chances are, we'll never meet that assignment with a truck company. Resource totals on scene was five chief officers, eight engine companies, one truck, no water tenders, no support units, no medic units, and for a total of 26 personnel. And again, just to highlight, the first engine arrived that achieved the NFPA 1710, six-minute response time and four minutes and 32 seconds. And in under 10 minutes, we had the four engines, two officers on scene for a total of 13 personnel. And I'll, I'll show you the relevance of that here when we compare it to 1720, which is for volunteer departments. Next slide. So under 1720, it's a little bit different. They, they apply it for volunteers, and they have demand zones, urban, suburban, rural, and special ricks. Well, we kind of fall right in that suburban 500 to 1,000 demographic per square mile. So if we apply 1720 to our response times, we would need to have 10 personnel on scene within 10 minutes, in which this case, we had 13 personnel on scene within 10 minutes. So we clearly met this standard on 1720. So you can see, comparing both, we did really well on 1710, and we actually really did very well on 1720. So overall, very proud of the response time standard that we had on this particular fire. Next slide. Check back information is information we get. There was some confusion on where this fire was originally. We were dispatched to report a commercial fire in the area of Gopher Flat and Main Street. No specific location, but it was not hard to find once we got going. A lot of the reports came in from people's homes that could see or hear it from a distance. So that's where the confusion was coming from, is they weren't sure where it was, because people couldn't pin it down, because they couldn't visually see the building. They could just see the glow or the fire or the call.
You're referencing dispatch, and I'm wondering, what is that initial dispatch around here? Who do you rely on to dispatch you?
The Amider County contracts with CalFire up in Camino Dispatch, up in Camino, California, El Dorado County.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So a 911 call?
So a 911 call would go to Amider Sheriff's Office, and that would be transferred to fire or, and an EMS. They'll transfer directly to, to Camino, and then Camino in turn will process the fire and then send fire. For EMS calls, Amider SO processes the call, dispatches a medic unit, and advises Camino with the resource needs. Next slide. When Chris arrived on scene, he's the engineer on 6433, said reported engine 6433 at scene. This will be at 76 Main Street, two-story commercial structure fully involved. And that was his report on conditions. As you can see, him arriving initially by himself, he had a lot to do. So he went right into a command role, in which he started his 360, which is walking around the structure the best he can to identify where the fire was and what he had. So as resources come in, he can give them assignments. Next slide, please. This is the picture taken by Sutter Creek PD when they arrived on scene. And as you can see, the entire second floor is, is well-involved, as well as, as, and you can see that the first floor doesn't have a whole lot of fire showing in it at the moment. Fire started to the right side of the picture there, towards the back of the building. And we believe some of this fire condition was enhanced based on the building construction for that upper balcony. But the fire came up into that upper balcony, and because the balcony is designed at an angle, a lot of that heat and fire was channeled, kept up high, couldn't escape unless it ran all the way to the front of the building. So we believe at this point, mostly this was exterior fire, with some interior fire in, in the back end of the building, in the back apartment, and a little bit into the kitchen and dining area on the first floor. Observations that were found on scene was, we had active visible fire along the second floor balcony on the Alpha and Delta sides. The Alpha would be the side to the left, the Delta would be the one on the right. Building exposures on the Bravo, Charlie, and Delta sides. Residents of the upstairs apartment woken by a smoke alarm. She saw the flames out of a rear window and exited safely out of the Alpha side stairway. And just one thing to note, that was her only exit. There was no other stairway out of this. So fortunately, the fire was to the rear of the structure and not to the front of the structure. Of course, we would have had a different situation. Weather that night was about, there's a typo there, but about 65 to 66 degrees, about 31 to 43% on the relative humidity, and the winds were out of the east, northeast about 6. So the wind had a little bit effect, and not a lot, but I think the east of the wind would have pushed it from the back towards the front of the structure. Next slide. The strategy that we generally try and use when we go on fire, these are our priorities. We always prioritize with rescue, then exposure, confinement, extinguishment, overhaul, salvage, and ventilation can occur anywhere in there. So on the rescue part, the victim self-rescued, so we knew we didn't have a rescue. So that changes how we look at fighting this fire. The exposures, we needed to protect the exposures on the Bravo, which would be the left side, the Charlie in the back, or the Delta, which would be the crossroads across the street on Randolph. So once we started working on exposures, we tried to confine that fire to 76 Main Street. We started with a defensive operation, which means exterior, trying to calm the fire down. Then we transitioned to an offensive, where we actually went inside the structure and started putting out the fire at the scene of the fire. And that worked out to be a very good operational strategy for us. Overhaul on the fire, we started at that point, we got into putting out the hot spots, and then, of course, we salvaged just about everything out of the Salonbe Beautiful building for her. We managed to remove everything for, out of the building, and help her load it into her vehicle. And then ventilation was not applicable for this particular firefight. Next slide. Initial assignments, just gives all the initial assignments, we're giving to all the resources there. We've got a couple pictures there. We've got the attack line going up to the second floor, water supply operation down on the left side, and then exposure operation there on Randolph Street to protect that Delta's crossroads building. Next slide. This is just the general aid of apparatus on the streets, just to show where the hose lays, the hose lines were. The yellow lines are the supply lines. The blue lines are our larger two-and-a-half-inch attack lines that were used for defensive operations. And then our red, the red marks are, the red lines indicate the fire tack for the inch-and-three-quarter lines. Next slide. So supply operations, engine 6433 secured a hydrant across the street on the Alpha side of the structure with a five-inch LDH line. They supplied the lines on the Alpha, Bravo, and Delta side of the structure. So they were the main pump So they were the main pumping platform for the operation, their engine company. Uh, engine twenty-seven seventy-four went down round off towards the back of the structure, and they secured a hydrant on Randolph and Boston Alley, and they provided an additional, uh, two-and-a-half inch line and inch-and-three-quarter line in the back to protect exposures. Next slide. Bravo, uh, Bravo exposure with the building to the left side of the, of the, uh, seventy-six Main Street. It was built in nineteen, roughly eighteen ninety. It's about thirty-five hundred square feet. It's a mix of different construction styles because it's been added on to over the, uh, over the years. It's non-reinforced brick, it's poured concrete, as well as stone. Uh, so you're dealing with a lot of different, uh, factors there. It is currently a saloon, and all, it also has a roof, which is skip sheeting and tin roof. And one of our concerns with this building was, is again, mostly the roof, the brick and the concrete did really well in terms of protecting, uh, that building from the fire, uh, as well as the defensive operations we put in place. Uh, but our big concern was fire getting up into the eaves of the structure, getting up into the attic space, which is just all open wood. Next slide. And this is the operations for the Bravo side. We ended up putting an inch-and-three-quarter line onto the roof of that building, and we use that to keep that wall, uh, extinguished. And the, you can't see it, but there's part of the building still below that roof line there where the gentlemen are sitting. So, uh, they worked really hard to keep that contained, and that helped protect that structure, uh, that they're sitting on. Next slide. Uh, these are some of the end results of that structure. You can see, this is from the, uh, second story of seventy-six Main Street, looking at one of the windows down onto, the left picture would be looking towards Main Street, where the salon would be in that small section of the building. Down below there, where you can see the burned rooms, those were bathrooms for the, uh, for the bar. Uh, the center picture is looking back towards the back of the building, and you can see the different construction styles of the unreinforced brick and the concrete there on that one structure. And then it, then the picture on the right shows you what kind of, uh, distance we're dealing with between the two structures. It was less than two feet of distance between the two. Next picture. Charlie exposure, the one in the back, um, it's about fourteen hundred square feet. It was built in around eighteen ninety-eight also, it's unoccupied commercial, uh, wood frame structure, lap wood siding, roof is also skip sheeting, tin roof with ridden trusses. It didn't get a whole lot of damage to it, uh, around the doors there, which are plastic framing on it. That melted some, we had a window that was broken, but otherwise, that building was untouched. This is, uh, operating the backside of seventy-six Main Street from that Charlie side exposure. And you can see the fire, most of the fire damage to the left side towards Randolph. And crews were working through this area here to try and keep the fire, um, contained. This area caused us a little bit of a problems in terms of accessing the building, because if you look on top of the, the roof there, you can see a, a large HVAC system, air conditioning system, that's tilted, the roof is compromised, and behind that is the second floor, part of the second floor, which is compromised, which is also starting to collapse. So we have to take those things into account when we make our operations inside and transition to offensive. Uh, next slide. The Delta side was the crossroads building, built around eighteen ninety-eight, twelve hundred square feet, commercial cafe, wood structure, wood lap siding, and metal roof. Um, next slide. This is the damage sustained, I think most of you probably have seen this, as if you've traveled down Main Street. Uh, most of the damage was just the paint itself sagging from the amount of radiant heat coming off the seventy-six Main Street, and we had some windows that were cracked. Next picture. Uh, this was the defensive operations that were going on, there was at least two, two-and-a-half inch attack lines that were on that side, uh, keeping the building, uh, extinct, trying to extinguish the building and keep the, uh, crossroads building protected. Next slide. This is the attack line. Once we transitioned, started going inside, this is the inch-and-three-quarter line, went up the stairwell to the top floor, and we managed to get water directly into the heat of the fire, or the areas of the fire that we could not reach from the exterior. And that was, uh, very successful in us being able to get this fire out quicker than we, uh, anticipated. Next slide. There's another picture of the second story, this is looking down the hallway towards the rear of the structure, and you can see the Charlie str- structure in the back exposure. And just to the left side of the picture is the hallway to the stairwells. Uh, the woman that was sleeping was just down into the right in one of those rooms. If you notice on this building here, it had a lot of, um, uh, tongue-in-groove, uh, wood on the siding, so not a lot of sheet rock. So you can take a look towards the top of the picture and see a lot of the structure itself is still intact and unburnt. Next slide. Overhaul, we used Ione's truck just to mostly do do overhaul, we didn't pull that inch-and-three-quarter attack line up there, and we just hit some hotspots up in some of the areas that were a little bit more tenuous early on, in terms of, uh, collapse problems. Next slide. Our investigation is still under investigation, we do have an area of origin to the rear of the structure, and we're still currently working on to try and, uh, resolve that, uh, investigation. Next slide. Lessons to be learned, apparatus positioning, uh, co-loading it, locating it, the hydrant would have given a master stream of access to two sides of the structure. So in this particular case, the positioning wasn't bad, but if they would have stopped shorter, right in front of Randolph where the hydrant was located, their master stream would have been out of two sides of the structure, instead of limited to one side of the structure. Uh, direct hose streams to the seat of the fire, and, uh, in some cases, some of the streams were just going through a window. We weren't really hitting the seat of the fire in some cases, we had to manage our transition to offensive, change that and fix that problem for us. And identifying the limited movement, so the master stream on that first engine had some restrictions in its ability to move under three-hundred-and-sixty degrees. It's a pivoting gun on top of the, mounted on the engine. And because of some of the buildup on the engine itself, it was limited on where it could actually direct that hose stream. So that's something they can, they can resolve through, uh, some, uh, modifications. Next slide. Kudos, protection of the three exposure buildings, to the point where those buildings are, for the most part, left untouched and in operation. Uh, scene was not overcrowded with apparatus, which allowed us for positioning of area apparatus later, if, uh, defensive operation was needed. And communication, I think what was equal, uh, was very good, uh, the airwaves on the radio was not overloaded, most everything was happening face-to-face communications. And assisting agencies were Sutter Creek, Jackson, uh, California Department of Forestry Fire Protection, Amater Fire, Ione Fire, and we even had Eldorado Hills coming with a second truck company, but we canceled them and route. And cooperators, Sutter Creek, Plea PD, Jackson, Ione PD, California State Farm Marshal's Office, Sutter Creek Building Department, Public Works, Pacific Gas and Electric, AT&T, and Campbell Construction. Campbell was really great about getting out there in the middle of the night, helping us out, get some of the stuff taken care of and mitigating some of the early hazards. And that's what I have for this particular.
Antonio, oh, excuse me. When you, um, hook up to both the hydrants on that half a block or whatever it is, does the, is the pressure adequate? Does the pressure? Go down, or there was no?
We had good pressure and water volume from that hydrant on Main Street. Any other questions on that? I'll speed, I'll speed through this one really quick, it's a lot shorter than the first one. The Manor Court Fire was a residential structure fire that we had exactly one week later after the seventy-six Main Street fire. Uh, it was a residential, uh, next slide. Uh, it was about one-point-one miles from the fire station up off of Manor Court. It was a duplex, uh, residential structure. Next slide. Uh, it was built in two thousand and two, residential duplex, sixteen-hundred-and-sixty-nine square feet, single-story wood-framed residential structure, stucco siding, and the roof was trussed with tile on it. Next slide. This is the general floor plan of that building. So the front door is down towards the bottom, and the back of the structure is up towards the top. The fire is indicated by the, uh, fire symbol there up towards the top of the screen. Crews came in through the front door, straight down the hallway to the living room, and extinguished the fire. For the most part, it was a room and contents fire. Uh, again, we can skip through this part, again, we're talking about six minutes and a ten minutes for the full assignment, if you want to go ahead, there you go. Uh, so in that first, uh, first response time, our first engine company arrived on scene in four minutes and twenty-two seconds. Again, well under the two-six minutes that we're looking for to hit. And in the ten-minute response time, we achieved three engines and three chiefs on scene for a total of fifteen personnel. Now, we didn't necessarily need to achieve the full assignment in the ten minutes, because we had knocked down within that ten minutes. The rest of the resources were, as you can see, towards the green on the bottom, don't have any times, they were all canceled. Uh, let's see here, and again, under the standards here, we're looking for having a total of ten personnel in, in ten minutes, and we had fifteen personnel on scene in ten minutes through all of our responding agencies. Uh, again, this one was here, is just, we have reported smoke coming from the vents of a structure. Next slide. He sixty-four hundred was first on scene, and he just advised we had smoke showing from the structure, and he began his three-sixty investigation. Next, the arrival conditions, again, he had smoke coming out of the vents, uh, laminar smoke coming out of the vents of the structure, but no actual fire visible at this point when he walked up. He did have darkened windows, which is again indicator of a fire that's gone into a somewhat of a smoldering phase, and the soot is starting to stick to the windows, therefore obscuring visibility. Um, next slide. On this particular one, the strategy, we completed the primary secretary surveys to confirm there was nobody home. Uh, we protected the attached duplex since there was another residence that is, uses common wall on this building, or this, uh, structure. Uh, we confined it to that particular, uh, part of the duplex. We went on an offensive attack on this one, and again, we picked up the hotspots, checked the attic spaces, et cetera, and we managed to salvage quite a few belongings for, uh, in the home itself. Next slide. Uh, and these are just some of the assignments that were given to some of our folks. Next slides. This is the general layout, so again, it was knocked down within the first three engine companies arriving on scene. It was just a single hose line on the ground that managed to put this fire out, tank water for the most part. Uh, next slide. Uh, this would be the Bravo exposure or the uninvolved part of the duplex. Next slide. This was where we advanced in with the inch-and-three-quarter line, you could see it towards the bottom there, and it went directly through down into the, uh, uh, the fire itself. And next slide. Overhaul operations, once we've got a knockdown on the fire, um, the, we went and checked the attic space, so the left side is cha- checking the crawl space in the residential portion, and the, we had a pull ceiling in the garage section to make sure we didn't have an extension. Next. Uh, this is just a picture of the salvage, so again, there's quite a few things in here that we're probably going to be able to salvage, uh, out of this property. This was the kitchen area. So for the most part, what the fire did, when we talk about room and contents, most of the fire or flame damage was contained to a particular room. But even with that flame damage to a particular room, you're going to get heat and smoke damage to other portions of the room, or portions of the building, because that smoke and heat's going to travel. Uh, so you can see there's no real flame damage in here, but most of it is either heat or smoke damage. Next slide. This is the area of origin, uh, causes undivigation, but we believe it to be possibly involving electrical with a heater device or the cord on that heater device. We're still trying to narrow that down. Um, but it started right in that area there. Next slide. This is a picture from the front door, looking in towards that living room, you can see, mm, a lot of stuff in there still unburned. And again, that goes back to what I was saying about a room and contents fire. It's, uh, it, we caught it fast enough to where it didn't get beyond that room and ignite throughout the house. Um, and we had very little minimal water damage, which is another thing, we have a tendency to sometimes do, is create a lot of water damage. So, uh, next slide. Uh, again, Sutter Creek, Jackson Fire Department, and California Department of Forestry assisted with this fire. I believe that's all I have on that one. Turn it over to Chief Brandon.
Okay, I'll go real quick, uh, the last two fires we've had last, uh, the last week, I'll go over those real quick. So one of them was at the Gateway Park, uh, we got dispatched for the fire at, uh, Gateway Park, uh, it was October twenty-first. So basically, he's at the corner highway forty-nine, old forty-nine, came in at twelve-fourteen. The agency assisting on this was the City of Jackson, CAL FIRE, and Sutter Creek PD. Next slide. So basically, the Gateway Park's at the top right there is the area that burned in this fire. Go ahead, the next slide. This was a camera shot from one of the alert cameras, picking up the smoke from the fire as it was, uh, before units arrived on scene. Okay, next fire, next slide. So this was actually the fire in here, burned in underneath the brush, in the brush, excuse me, grass underneath the trees. It did damage two trees, probably going to have to come down, uh, from the damage from the trees. Go ahead, next slide. Uh, after the fire, basically, we're, uh, we had, uh, communication lines and the power lines inspected by the agencies to make sure they're okay. There is some damage to, uh, irrigation systems up there that's probably going to have to be replaced if it's in use or not. Go ahead, next slide. So the cause on this one was a campfire, we found a little campfire underneath the trees there. So somebody had, basically, it looks like either a warming fire or a campfire the night before, and then they basically left and the temp, uh, tempers came up and the humidity went down, and then it just started skunking around, around the trees. Okay, go ahead, next one. The next one, this is the building fire at, uh, four-sixty highway forty-nine, happened on, uh, ten-thirty-twenty-four at eleven o'clock at night. Agency assistance on this was Sutter Creek PD, go ahead and s- So basically, it was in the back loading dock area of, used to be called ATI, now REBE's, now NAPA. Uh, so that's a picture of the loading dock.
I said the back door to the thrift store.
The back door, thrift store, then, right, and then yours is the, the old one, right? Okay, next picture. Okay, so this is the actual fire, that basically, there was a bunch of debris, uh, plastic containers, cardboard, clothes, things of that nature that were lit aside the, aside of the building. Next slide. So again, some more pictures of the debris that was burned, uh, and basically, you can see the scorching on the walls where the fire went up the side of the wall and stuff. Again, if you look at the construction at this, block construction really made a difference. If this was wood construction, we might have had a lot more damage going forward. So this is after the fire, the next day, we went over, took pictures just to show, those are electrical lines in the right picture going across. Again, the scorching to the wall on the left side there. Next picture. So after the fire, we actually go inside, this is inside on the other side of the block wall, so that block wall insulated all this stuff. Now, if that was a wood wall, there's a potential it could have gone through the wall, then we'd had basically fire inside the building too. So it's important, with building codes, uh, construction is very important in our, and how we deal with fire. Uh, next one. The cause on this was individual lighting materials outside of the building, they had videotape showing them doing it. He was caught for another incident, was in jail already, and basically, they just added the additional possible arson charge to him while he's in the jail. And that's the extent of it. Do you have any questions from the fire department on, well, the slow month we had?
Uh, we've got a question from the public.
Hey, nice, new presentation.
Um, I, I, I think everyone's been real concerned about, I call it the palace, uh, building, uh, wh- who did the fire investigation of cause and origin?
The, the main, we're the main responsibility for the cause. Antonio and I have extensive background. And then, uh, PD called in, uh, State Farm Marshal Office, given initially a couple of CAL FIRE, prevention guys came in, but they've really got heavy background building. So, from the actually State Farm Marshal's team. But he's doing the summary once he finishes this up, then he'll come out, actually.
Did you determine the origin?
We, we have the basic origin, but basically, we're coming back to what they actually thought.
And then the other question was, the, the building was taken down pretty quickly, and I know it was, it wasn't salvaged at all. But did the insurance company get a chance to take a look at it before it was taken down?
Yes, so we do, uh, we do things pretty fast here, because if, once we get on scene, one of the first things I do is I find out, uh, whoever the building owners and owner is, and tell them, get hold the insurance, get them out here. So we had insurance people on scene by about six o'clock.
Oh, right.
So, and then by eight o'clock, they had a structural guy from the insurance company there, and by ten o'clock, they had additional people from, so they literally had almost everybody there except for the investigator. So we already did the investigation, they were, came in and did all their sizing of the building and everything else. And then basically, it was determined, we couldn't, if we left the building up, we wouldn't be able to open Main Street. So, yeah, so, yeah, so we basically, it was a safety issue to bring the building out, so everybody was concurrence. We left the back area where we determined the origin was for the investigator from the insurance company, he came on Monday, looked at it, collected whatever he needed to collect, and then we finished flattening it down. So, uh, we do those, the insurance company actually made a comment saying, man, you guys did this real quick. And a lot of places, they drag these things out, and, uh, one thing that happens when you drag these things out, the insurance, uh, when you have a building that you're insured, all these costs, they bill out of your settlement. So the more that's, these people show up and do all the stuff, the more they get charged out, so the longer it's drags out, the less money you get out of your settlement. So by making this process faster, the gentleman should get more settlement money to help rebuild the building.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, that's it. Yeah, so that's the process, how it worked.
Do you, do, do you have any theories on the cause?
We do, but until we get the summary, yeah. So until we get the summary, we're just holding off on that.
Okay, but that will be disclosed.
Yes, most definitely.
Right after this, we had the arson fire.
Yes. And yeah, so, uh, basically we look at every fire the same way. We look at it, we call it, we call it, uh, fire cause and origin first. And we eliminate, so we eliminate, first thing, easiest is lightning. There's no lightning, you throw it out. And you go, says, is there any gas or electric or, uh, natural gas or propane? If there's none of those things, you throw them out. You get to the point where you've eliminated all the logical reasons. And you go look at, okay, what could be the other side of this? So that's every fire, we start the same way. So we go with that mindset and we work our way. Once we determine if there's a example of arson, we then get a, or suspicious circumstances, we then get the PD involved. So right up to bat, Jim's building up there, we knew we had an arson. So PD was there, we said, hey, we need to start this process and we start heading down the path as fast as we can. On the house on Manor Court, we determined right away that that was a, looks like it'd be a, uh, electrical malfunction. So we eliminated the suspicious arson pretty quick on that fire. We already had the determination before we left the scene.
And then the only other thing is we've got a lot of buildings in Sutter Creek with similar layout. Where you have commercial, low, residential, very old buildings. And I know they're not up to these fire code standards. I mean, what, what can the city do? I mean, we know, we could have had a loss of life.
Yes.
And, and then the only other thing I don't know, did the city, did, did, did they have an occupancy for meant to have, uh, apartments above the palace?
Uh, I believe there's always been apartments up there. Only one of them was occupied. The other two were actually in a state of repair. Um, so that, you would have to actually ask the building inspector on that question there, but, uh,
I, I would say more accurately, they were, uh, in the state of remodel.
Yeah, repair, that's why they basically said, yeah, repair. So basically, uh, the way that works with, you can't go into most buildings unless it's a change, uh, occupancy to make updates. So as long as occupancy stays the same, there's very little change we can do.
Even though they were remodeling, it wouldn't require sprinkler.
No, no, yeah. So unfortunately, you know, uh, Hotel Sutter was unsprinkled for many, many years. And when they did their major remodel, we actually got that sprinkler, which was a, really a good thing for us and the city and everything else. So we would love to see the, everything sprinkled, but it's again, the cost. And that's where, you know, down the road, there might be funds or something, grants or something to help to alleviate some of that cost to maybe sprinkler buildings going down the road.
Because it's not uncommon for a lot of these to have one way.
Oh, yes, very much so, very much so. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Is there, uh, a way to ensure that, uh, smoke detectors are installed and functioning? Is there?
Yeah, in, in a single family home, we don't have any authority, but in anything that's like in a rental apartment, a building, so like on a commercial building like that, we go out and we do, uh, what we call, uh, uh, smoke detector declarations. So every year we go to all the apartments, all the duplexes, all those things, and we hand out this paperwork. The owner, builder, manager then has to certify that all the smoke detectors are up to date, batteries are changed and they're all in place. And then every time we go into a house on a call, like a medical aid or something, we always check them. We always look at them and sometimes we'll go in a house where the smoke detector's been removed. And before we leave that call after medically, we'll actually install smoke detectors for them. So we carry smoke detectors and, and carbon dioxide detectors on our engines for situations like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to your volunteers too.
Okay, that takes us to item six, the city council minutes from October twenty-first.
Do you, do you have the minutes?
They weren't in the packet.
You have to fire the city clerk. I think that was my fault. I'm just noticing they're not linked in. Um, they'll be in the next packet.
Our clerk slash manager. All right, so we will push that off. And, uh, item seven is a consent agenda. Neither entertain a motion to approve consent agenda or?
Make a motion to, I have no, all of good to me, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, our administrative agenda, Mason.
Um, Madam Mayor, before you, he starts on this, I, I'd like to compliment Mason for the very thorough and informative staff report. I really appreciate it. I think we all do. And it, uh, a report like that, I think, in, in my, speaking for myself, instills a lot of confidence in the, in the job that you're doing along with, uh, the city manager. I appreciate it.
I do really appreciate that. Um, I, you know, this is like, it's still relatively new role for me. I have not been around very long. Um, and new for me just coming from my background, so, um, I work really hard.
Appreciate it.
Um, so it's good to hear that.
A lot of, a lot of good information. Yeah.
I hope, I hope so. Yeah, I, I really do try to like make it, to make it for you and for them. You know, they can look at this and kind of get an idea about what's going on.
Yeah.
I agree, I had the same comment. The narrative, the narrative is really helpful to help you digest the rest. And then, um, it also lets us know that, um, y- you understand what we need to see to make our decisions. Because sometimes it is still hard to understand these reports, the way they're formatted.
It is, yep. Um, as we go forward, like we talked about, we're in, we're implementing, um, we're in the very early stages, but, you know, as we get to those parts, I think it'd be good to have everybody who's going to see them involved, just kind of get an idea about what they look like and what, how powerful they can be. As we get there. I don't think we're there quite, we won't be there for a little bit, but. But, um, yeah, I mean, the intro to this, I feel like this is kind of a similar form that I've done in the past. I kind of go into each line item as I feel like it's necessary. And, um, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about any details from the reports that supplement the actual staff report. Yeah. Last year was a bit of a funky year. We got a pretty, um, sizable reimbursement from PG&E for, um, it was before my time, Jody had explained it to me. Um, but they sent us one big check that got kind of spread out across all of our expense accounts for, I don't know if we were being overcharged or if it was a reimbursement for something that they had. I know AT&T was leasing their antenna on top of the roof and PG&E had given, they were giving us money back for something. I'm not quite, I don't quite remember, but it kind of muddied the expense accounts for PG&E last year, making it look really low. And I think when we were building the budget, um, we had looked at those numbers and kind of, uh, lowballed the total we were, could expect for the year. So it's really, is it working again? Is it working? Okay. Yeah, I think we just underestimated the, uh, PG&E costs in the budget and it's something we can rectify. We just need to increase the appropriate amounts that we're going to pay this year.
You, you explained that in the report here, which I appreciate, and I thought, well, gee, you know, to not have that happen, we could go back and look at an average or whatever of so many years. But really not with PG&E. It seems like every year we've gone through this volatility with them, so it's pretty understandable that.
Winters are really expensive.
Yeah, and a couple of years ago, our costs went way up with rate hikes and, um, I, I want to go back to the revenue and ask a couple just smaller-ish questions.
Okay.
Um, facility rental fees, did we budget for the Arts Council and Foothill Conservancy to rent those spaces? Or does that go into facility rentals or somewhere else?
That would go into facility rentals.
And it was budgeted for?
I believe we had that agreement signed before.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's in there.
Definitely the Art Council.
Yeah.
You guys already discussed the, uh, ACTC reimbursement. And then affluent disposal. The revenue we receive as reimbursement is from the ARSA partners. Yeah, okay. And we're currently working on new agreements with those partners, which should rectify that. Um, but in my memory, um, and I honestly ca- I think it was before Tom, maybe Jim can help out on here. I think that the ARSA partners, including us, invoices for last year's ARSA did not meet the full ARSA budget because there's some, reserve in ARSA that was expected to be spent out. So, because ARSA money, it, it, basically, I guess my question is, is this item going to be cleared up with the, um, dissolution of ARSA?
I, I think, um, again, we did the budget that ARSA approved, which included capital reserves going forward. So.
The previous ARSA budget, um,
Previous ARSA budget exceeded the budget because of the lawsuits, so it ate into some of the reserves.
Right, and even the, the actual approved budget, the total expense for the year was not covered by the budgeted payments by the partners.
Correct, but this year, we built the budget to include reserves and some amounts, so it should be okay. You know, and it, it, it included four hundred thousand as half of the Henderson underdrain repair, so.
I just had a quick question. Do we feel like we have the utilities under control at the old schoolhouse? Because I know there was some sort of talk prior with regard to there was only one controller and it's a big building and.
We're still working on it. Uh, so we had been talking to a HVAC energy efficiency company and then they went quiet on us. We found out that, um, I mean, they're, basically, I think it's hard for them to get contractors out here that work at prevailing wage. So we just started last week, started talking to a couple of other companies, but, yeah, so again, I, I think particularly the grammar school, it's insulation, potentially windows and HVAC, but it has to kind of pencil out to be able to make the investment.
And then not to nitpick, but I'm just curious, do we, is there one thermostat and then the tenant controls it?
My understanding is that there is a thermostat for the upstairs and the downstairs. But the tenants do not have access to them. It's up to us to monitor and change them for the tenants. Um, I say that because we just had a renter ask us if we can crank it up a little bit because it's cold in there.
Yeah, that's true. I think the main problem with it, Susan, and I thought it was only a, a pad up above, but yeah, it's, George Allen's the master of the thermostat.
Yep.
Um, but there's no zones in that building, so it's on or off for the, the whole thing. Would it be worth, look, I mean, are we heating that entire building?
So again, we don't have zone control, so yes. It's part of this energy efficiency, but it's the expensive project, it's a big building, way the construction is. You know, we have to try to use the existing dock or to route things. So, you know, and it's historic, so it's like, um, you don't want to make too many changes.
Do you think it would be worthwhile to look at putting a split in for winter, just for their office? I mean, that building must be fortunate.
Yes, so the art, are you talking about the artists?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they had a little space heater. They kind of managed their office, I think, on their own. It is smaller, so that's why probably the rest of the building is cold. And, um, you know, they heat up their office.
But you don't think like a short-term fix before trying to do the whole building could be like, what are they splits, you know?
Yeah, the, I know what you're talking about, but I still think there's, those units typically need still some duct, duct work done. To like a primary unit on the exterior of the building, it'd be, I still think there'd be a lot of like.
Yeah, there's a condenser unit that goes outside and.
My, I have one in my house, so, you know, they're really slick and they work really well, but they had to like go through a wall and like put pipe, like, you know.
Yeah, I'm familiar with them. They were considered though, with the, the foundation had gotten proposals for HVAC and then you guys worked with Sierra Business Council, and I know that's included in, uh, the series of splits are included in the considerations, but it's a, I don't know, it's a eighty thousand or something, I thought, dollar project. Well, in the short term, if we can just be mindful of the bill and the comfort of the tenant.
Yeah, we, you know, it's, I think as long as there's not renters in there all the time, I think we lower it, but upon request if people are in there. I mean, we do have tenants that are in there a lot. We have ballet and we have yoga and stuff in there fairly regularly. So we keep it warm for them.
Not really warm, but not freezing.
It's not hot yoga or anything.
Well, they just need to keep moving.
So this line, this item, looking at the expense accounts only, not the revenue. So if ACTC were to have reimbursed this, which they have not yet, so we have not recognized the revenue back for Eureka Road, um, it'd show elsewhere in this report, so it'd be in the revenue side, not the expense. But the timing of when we witness these expenses on this annual budget item, you know, it could spike at one point and then kind of level out for a while. So it might spike now, level out, because we, we had two fairly large streets projects happen pretty much back to back. And there was a lot of project management on those.
So that, this part of the budget was mainly those two projects, so it's not going to be spread out over four quarters. So it was anticipated that we'd be concentrated the way we are. I think he's just trying to explain why it was concentrated.
Yeah, but the benchmark that you're asking about twenty-five percent, so we're, we're twenty-five percent through the year. So for many things, we, we could assume like utilities may, well, not utilities, actually, that's not a good example.
Spikes in the winter.
Yeah, some things, um, like salaries, you know, you would be twenty-five percent in, but we did, you know, that was our, that we, we, uh, that was our main projects in that function. Anybody else? The public have anything to say on this first item, which is the budget performance review for Q1? Okay, the second item is a general fund reserve policy.
There was a, we had worked on something like this a while ago, um, and it got, kind of talking back to the drawing board. We don't have a formal reserve level policy for the city to say like, this range of reserves based on budget revenues for the year is like a level that would be comfortable in the event of something, you know, like a revenue. you know, like a revenue source might dry up for some crazy reason and we need something to hold us over till we find a solution. We didn't have a formal level to look at to say it's good or bad. And this tries to rectify that as well as just like, uh, overall general fund revenue or general fund reserve levels for like capital projects or unbudgeted projects that the council you might want to partake in, that we have reserves that could tackle that, that are ready to go. So it's something, you know, that we'd have to look back on each fiscal year as our budgeted general fund revenues change to say what is that new level and what can we, what should we be striving to reach for each year?
So it's really a way, I think, for council to, when we bring a budget to you guys, we'll, we'll also bring the overall operating reserve and all the other reserves in the general fund, and then we have wastewater reserves. And we're basically saying, here's a minimum level, here's the max level. You know, if we're going below the minimum, we'll, we'll have to have a big conversation about that and why, and how do we get it back up to the minimum? And we're also suggesting if we go over the max, that we could do potentially several things with the money, we could potentially allocate some to the Section 125 trust account. We could, um, you know, just keep it in the reserve, or we could, uh, you know, use it for another special project, basically, but again, it's just to, so these are our targets and give you guys comfort that we're managing the budget in a sound, kind of conservative way.
I had something, one question. This looks great and familiar, you know, I, I think it's something that we kicked around, was very similar to this, and we just didn't finalize it. But when you're talking about, not the operating reserve, the other reserve, and we would fund capital projects out of it and also non-budgeted projects. So, um, in most of the recent past, we spend that money on capital projects due to necessity, like the sinkhole and, um, so.
Right.
What is the difference if we choose to do a project like Oremadre versus if we have to do a project like Gold Strike Court? Do they both come out of this fund?
I think that if council feels strongly about doing something that wasn't originally in the budget, something comes up in the middle of the year that seems urgent, that should be done, this is the fund that we would use and we'd come to you with a resolution to get that, pay it out of this fund to get it done.
But with our next budget, so with our last budget, rather, we budgeted to do Oremadre and kind of Eureka, but that was reimbursed. So, but that was budgeted for under streets and roads. We did not take that out of the general reserve fund, right?
That, well, it took, it's paid out of streets, but at the end of the day, we don't get enough streets revenue each year to fund for a project like that, so it typically comes out of a general fund anyways.
General fund, not general reserve fund.
Well, it could be a combination of both, just, you know.
Depends on.
It would be what the budget says, but the streets fund just does not generate enough revenue year after year through highway user tax and the.
Impact fees.
Or the impact fees, or there's another, we get a check each month from the state comptroller's office for taxes for gas, basically. But they're not, I mean, we'd be waiting for years to be able to fund it with just that money. So we really rely on our general fund, whether it's operating reserves or the reserves or just operating revenues we get throughout the year.
So it is that reserve account that we're building up our capital spending.
So I think what you're asking is, should we have like unallocated capital reserve for an emergency? I think.
Yeah, I guess I'm asking for the difference between the staff, the recommendation specifies it would be, and I'm not talking about the operating reserves at all, the other account. It would be for, um, non-budgeted projects that the council chooses to do and budgeted projects that the council chooses to do.
Budget.
And I understand by the non-budgeted, you know, a lot of our capital projects are foisted upon us by mother nature or whatever else.
Yep, so again, we had, um, forty percent in reserve after all the capital projects that we were planning to do in that year.
Right.
So for future years. And, and again, we can always come back and do a budget amendment if something really big happened, we can say, you know what, we're not going to do that project that we budgeted for this year, we're going to put it into a sinkhole or whatever is needed.
And I do think that the budget we passed this last year made it, it made us tapping into the reserves for the year pretty clear about how much was being used and for what reasons, so. And I know we talked a lot about that, and, um, so that does come up during budget season for using those capital for what and for what and why, so.
That's, oh, exactly, I, yeah, I understand all that, I guess, I, I'm just wondering if it's kind of two different types of reserve, like.
Claire, the confusion I have, and I don't know if this helps or not, is there's, there's the general fund operating reserve, which Mason, you talk about initially, and you talk about creating, you know, throw in a little extra money over the next three years to, to build that up. And then there's the general fund total reserve, and there's some proposed guidelines about that. And then later on, it says, quote, "We've combined those reserves into a single general fund reserve consisting of the operating reserves and general fund reserves." So I don't get it. Do we have one bucket? Do we have two that used to have more, and Tom, you've consolidated those into just one? I'm just confused in that aspect, I, I have a hard time.
Gee, the verbiage, I think I could have improved upon there, I, I apologize.
That's okay, but what, what does it mean?
So the operating reserve is its own bucket. And now.
It is.
It is its own bucket.
All right, and you are proposing to throw in an extra hundred thousand bucks over the next three years or something to build that up, perhaps?
A percentage of revenues.
Cool, no, that makes sense.
Yeah, whatever that number would be.
Okay.
When I talk about total reserves for the general fund, that does, so there are two buckets. There's a general fund reserve and then there's an operating reserve, but when we talk about in this report, we are talking about what are the combined levels of those two and do they meet that thirty-five to forty-five percent?
Okay.
Target, so it's operating and total, all combined, do we hit that targeted?
And you were also right in that there used to be a lot of these little funds that were all part of the general fund.
Right.
And they just had names on them. They weren't like technically reserves, they were like little savings accounts, and we did combine a bunch of those just to simplify and make it clear.
Okay.
So to, just to clarify, there are two buckets, but in this report, when we talk about operating reserve, that's the, that's the one bucket. But then the other total general fund, that is all the general fund reserve buckets combined, and there's, but there's only two, so there's.
Including operating?
Including operating.
Okay.
And that, but.
So I guess what I don't get then is how can you have rules about the operating that say we want to raise it to X amount? And you have a different set of rules for the total, don't they then go together? What you do to one will impact the other? So how can you treat them differently in terms of what your expectation is?
I guess, I guess an example is right now where the total is right at our target, forty percent.
Yeah.
The operating is low, so we have more outside the operating reserve than in the operating reserve.
So, but if we throw more in the operating, then we're going to be over on the total, so why would we?
Possibly, or we'll budget less than the total, but.
I guess it just, when you combine those two things, and all of a sudden you're looking at, if we're good at forty in total, but we're just low on this other thing, why would we mess around with it? Knowing that that's going to increase the overall number.
I, I think another thing to think about, operating reserve is kind of our cash flow to run the city, and the total is like our emergency pile for the year, if you will, so.
Yeah.
Because the cash flow is kind of built on some of this lumpiness we're talking about, like when revenue comes in.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah.
I get that.
So, if I may, uh, my question is, says the general fund reserve goal is to stay within seventeen to twenty-five percent. That's a pretty broad target, so explain that to me. If we get to eighteen percent, we say, okay, we're good. Or is the goal to get, is the goal twenty-five percent? Which, which is it?
I think staff is recommending twenty-five percent by what, what the words say in the report.
I think, I think the higher we are on that scale, the better because of the, uh, and it's mentioned in here, the Q1 and Q2 cash flow, kind of. Tightening we see during that time period, um, the higher we have that operating reserve, we could tap into that during that Q1, Q2 of each year as, as, as we need to.
I guess I'm just saying that, see, then the goal should be twenty-five percent.
Well, I think you want a range, just, you know, depending on what's happening year to year, you may not want to exactly hit it. But, I mean, if you feel like that range is too wide, we could narrow it. Again, I think the range on the overall total reserves, again, you know, revenue is uncertain. You know, there's a lot of things that aren't precise, so, you know, we're trying to keep it within this range.
Right, I just don't want a future council to say, you know, see, the, okay, we're at eighteen percent.
Yeah, I think we're comfortable in the whole range, um, we're just saying we'd love to be more on the high side than the low side.
Right, so I'm reading it as seventeen percent of the general fund annual revenue equates to running the city for two to three months. That's here, and you guys are recommending going to the higher end of that range as we are able.
That's, yes, right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm good if that's the goal.
Well.
On board, to stay at, to the higher end if possible.
Sure, that makes sense, I mean, why not, I mean, if we can afford to do that.
I think we, mm-hmm, correct, and I think the higher we are in that range, the more comfortable we can be about it just with fluctuations about what those expenses might look like in Q1, Q2. If you take, one of my examples in this report is our, um, risk management, or risk management company and their annual, um, live, their insurance costs. We saw a fairly significant increase this last year with very little warning. And so if that reserve has a little bit higher on the range, if we get that last minute, you can expect, you know, from the RMA, they could say, well, here's a twenty percent bump in your insurance premium for the year, sorry about that. And we have, you know, we got notified in May. Budgets do right around that time, and then we have to make sure we have the money because they charge it all at once in August. So we have three or four months to come up with the money. So it's tough, so if we have more money in that reserve for something like that happening, which it just did not that long ago, it wasn't quite, you know, it wasn't as drastic as twenty percent, but it wasn't a small jump. We'd be able to ride that out a little more comfortably, I think.
Yeah, I would support that, the, the other way to mitigate some of that stuff is, what we don't do is, we don't do much seasonal budgeting in terms of when we know something is going to happen on a certain month. We kind of ignore that and we continue to just divide by twelve. You know, we can do a better job, I think, in the future, doing more seasonal budget approach. In, in my experience, that's worked out well to handle some of these issues also, just FYI.
That's a great idea, yeah.
When you know, you know it's going to, you know, don't put it, don't divide by twelve.
There are some things we can reliably assume are going to happen at certain times of the year, such as that insurance payment.
Property taxes.
Then you get a better look.
I think the other reason to have a range, and again, this hasn't been a challenge for us yet, but hopefully will be, is if at some point you do start to pull in a lot of revenue, you know, you want to, you know, do the work for the taxpayers, you don't want to just build up your reserves to some. Right, so that's the idea of an upper range too, is that we would look for more capital projects, we would, you know, use that money for things.
It's always a balance.
Anyone in the public have any questions? Oh, sorry, Jim.
I always want to point out, when dinosaurs roamed Sutter Creek, the history of things, so.
Don't make me laugh.
Anyway, uh, I always go back to the pot of money that was awarded Sutter Creek on the Highway Relinquishment money. It was close to three million dollars. And then a report came out of the most underwater cities in California. Sutter Creek was right at the top of the list, I don't know if you were on the city council then or not, Jim.
No, I was, I think that was right before.
Okay, you lucky guy. So anyway.
When they tapped into that.
Well, what.
Relinquishment money?
Yeah, so what happened, in order to get, yeah, in order to get, uh, out of an underwater position on paper, that money turned out it was not, it didn't have to be spent on roads. Caltrans didn't put any kind of stipulation on it. You would think a prudent body would say, we got it for roads, we better keep it in those, but it didn't happen. So the money got transferred to the general fund reserves, and then all the negatives went away. And then the council assured the public at the time, there's seven hundred thousand dollars left in the reserves, and we're, it's, it's a lockbox, we're, we're not going to touch that. And it's dwindled a bit, I think you guys are doing a better job. But my concern, and I brought this up when you were going for the, the sales tax, that if you, you have good intentions of using the money for appropriate reason, for appropriate projects, but if, if your budget gets strained, your general fund budget gets strained, that money goes there. So I, I've seen over the years, there's never, it's always status quo on the general fund budget every year. There's never any tweaking to say, how can we save money? How can we put more money in reserves? How do, how can we manage our costs? All it is, is goes up, up and up. And I think there's decisions you can make to save money in the general fund budget, to not put so much pressure on these things. There was a time, in not too distant future, that the, the road money that came into the roads was never allocated to personnel time. Not that it's not, it's not inappropriate to use it for personnel time, but there was a time when that money was set aside only to do roadwork, not to charge for personnel. And then you had every maybe, every multiple years, you could do an overlay project. That all went away. Your city manager's time is built, some of the city manager's time to the road fund, and then all your, a lot of your other personnel costs too. I'm not saying that's inappropriate, obviously if they work on those functions, you can build to it. But it never gives you a chance to build those reserves. If you're, we're going to find out pretty quickly whether you're, you're, you're going to pass this one percent to start getting money back in the reserves. I would hope that if the one percent is successful, that you do really allocate that money to our streets and roads and not for other general fund increases. You, you're going to have, to have discipline to do that. And hopefully you, you will assure that that money gets used for that purpose. And I know it's general fund, there's another thing on the ballot to change things, I think it's totally back assward, to be honest with you. I think the level to get a general fund, a general tax should be a higher, probably, I think we all agree with that. And for, for dedicated stuff where people can go, hey, that can only be used for roads, I'll vote for that, it's a lower level because you know it can only be used for that. I know it, and I, and I, but what they've done with the new legislation is they've opened the door for everything. It's too bad they didn't have a two, two-fold thing where they raised it for one and for the other. But anyway, I just wanted to give you a historic perspective of where at least three million dollars that could be in your road account right now went to balance general fund budgets because you lost a lot of revenue when you lost a car dealership out of town, so, anyway. I'll get off my soapbox, thanks.
This actually was an item for a motion, we have a resolution here, right? It's not a resolution, but we can approve this policy?
Yeah.
Review and approve.
Yeah, it's on the screen, just to adopt the policy for the two reserves.
And of course, we can always tweak this policy.
Yeah.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to adopt the general.
I'll make a motion to adopt the general fund reserves policy.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Uh, see, the downtown trees concept continuance.
Thanks, Mason.
So we're just bringing this back because we, last time we had this up, um, there's only, I think, two or three, three, three councils? Yeah, three council members, um, and so we wanted to get your opinion on whether you want us to prioritize trees in the downtown area, um, at the expense of other things, or if you would like to, um, to just go like we are normally going. Um, so I've done a little more research on this, um, found some spots that we could potentially put trees. There is, the first area is the, um. The parking lot, like, the parking lot next to the post office. Um, it looks like there's like three of them there, um, and there might have been two others on the, uh, west side.
I think there was.
But there's not now, so it seems like a good place to put a couple more.
There used to be a tree there. I did want to say though, the one on the bar left, there's actually an oak that's bigger than in that picture now, and I think it wants to be an oak tree and would be worth.
Pruning up and developing it?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, it's growing, yeah.
It looks like it volunteered, but it's bigger than that.
Yeah, so if you see my little, uh, green, uh, semi-trees kinda?
Boy, that's a nice looking tree.
I, I would try to buy something about that size too, so that's why I was kind of trying to. Put in there, yeah. I'm guessing they're around fifteen hundred dollars a piece, that's kind of my guess. We haven't looked at anything more substantial yet.
Isn't that where we just did the sinkhole? Isn't there kind of this weird cap under there?
I'm not sure, in the back there is.
Pretty sure, yes.
Probably news to both of us.
That's like a floating hole of space.
Okay.
Right, Jim?
Yeah. How was it repaired?
Crepe myrtles in those two locations.
They might have cut down when we did the sinkhole.
No, no, they didn't.
No, at one point, there was a big tree there that got cut down when there was like a big tree cutting down.
Can you guys clarify though, that the sinkhole wasn't filled in, it was, or some?
Yeah, there's a big cap.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
No trees there.
I, but the sinkhole is on, you can see the two mo, stone monuments there.
Is it like on?
It's on the other side of those.
Okay, it's in the back.
Where that new blacktop is. I don't, I don't.
Bunch of empty spaces there.
It's quite a ways down. It goes down and then there's, uh, drifts off of the vertical shaft.
So Dan, I have a question.
I don't think there's a problem planting trees.
There's, you got dirt there?
There's some dirt, yeah.
You can go right into dirt, you got irrigation there?
Uh.
There is irrigation.
I think there is, yeah.
So fifteen hundred bucks a tree? I bought a lot of trees in my life, I never spent anywhere near fifteen hundred bucks on a tree, what kind of tree are we talking about?
I mean, I'm talking about a pretty big tree, a substantial tree, so that you could, so that you could have, like, I'm not talking like a little tiny bush, I'm talking like an actual big.
Right.
Like probably the size of those.
I'm all for planting a small tree and let it grow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you can do that too? Yeah?
That's the great myrtle, right?
Very slow growing.
That's exactly what I was thinking, yeah. I'm not sure, but I mean, yeah, they're, they're around a thousand to two thousand dollars to get a tree that size, yeah.
The only thing on that, and I'll ask her again, but I have a regular customer who works for USDA and has a PhD in plant pathology, and she was encouraging me to buy smaller plants because they're less stressed and they might end up growing faster, so like.
Yeah, I could see, I could see spending fifteen hundred dollars planting a grown, basically a mature tree, and then having it die. I'd rather start with a small tree and let it establish.
It's, it just might look a little weird if you have two small trees and three big ones, but, you know.
There, there is like part of the research I did though, is, is managing age in trees, so it might actually be a good thing to have younger trees as those age out.
Yeah, all, all of this will be figured out, but that's, that was not really the point of this thing. The, the point of this was just to say, do you want us to move forward with this and like, look at this more? Or? These are very, very general aspects, you know, so.
If, it's a lot easier to move forward if the costs are less.
Well, right, but that's, if you, when they, when you brought us this before, the question was, is this a new project that we're asking staff to take on? And it would be at the expense of one of these other things.
Yes.
Um, and they would then answer all these questions and figure out all these options, you know, if it's something we're going to do. Um, in the meantime, I had thought, you know, after our last meeting, because I, I would not, um, put a, a tree study project, whatever, on top of these lists. Um, on top of a list with these items, above these items, but we do have beautification money in the budget, right?
I mean, that's for the umbrellas and the planters.
That's the marketing one, isn't there something in Parks and Rec? I think there's a beautification item, line item in Parks.
I thought we pulled it into that marketing budget.
Well, I would think that, you know, we could understand or get, give you direction that, you know, as we're doing these things and making improvements in areas and, you know, before we do another miner's bin, that trees are something we want to include. And then, you know, next budget season, you know, look at our projects and our priorities and everything else, but, um. Aside from keeping in mind that whenever we dig up some dirt, if it's appropriate, we should put a little tree in it, um, I don't think it jumps the line.
I, take that particular location, that's on the screen right now, I think we could get some volunteers, if there's irrigation there, dig some holes and go to the.
Yeah, hello.
Those are nursery and get a couple of.
Yeah.
Fifteen gallon trees and, and plant them.
Absolutely.
That's, that's definitely an option.
But that's a lot different than say miner's bin, you don't.
Right. And, and Jim too, that, I, I agree with you, and I also, I got to ask a clarifying question here, because when we're talking about jumping the line or all that kind of thing, we've got this list of five items here. Park pavers all the way through Bryson Bathroom. Are we suggesting that these are in the budget and there's dollar amounts already allocated for these things? Because I'm not aware of that.
The park pavers, yes, um.
So how much money? What we got to do is, we got to quantify these things.
The park pavers was thirty-five thousand.
Okay, so thirty-five thousand. If these things are in the budget.
It's time and money, so the crosswalk, I think we're thinking now that we have the striping machine, we do that work under.
And that was in, that was in the, but we contemplated that and put that in the budget?
No, but we had approved moving forward with ACTC and the Bike Ped Committee on working towards that.
No, we haven't approved any money for that.
Not money, but we've approved it, you know, the, the staff.
This isn't money on this one, this is time, so we would, yes, we would buy the paint in our, in our public works budget.
And we would have to move some, um, some of the ramps, you know, that, that would be the main cost of that one.
Okay, so that's, I think it's important that if, as a group, if we're being asked if we want to put something ahead of these, we need to know what that cost is, whether it's dollars, or whether it's hours, and then make that decision. Right now, we, we don't know, yet, and I'm not saying anybody did anything wrong, I'm just saying we just don't have that information yet.
The, the, the point of this report from the first time was just to see if there was interest, so.
Absolutely, I think we, we're all.
We came back with some numbers, but they're not, they're not very good numbers, to be honest.
Yeah, no, fair enough.
They're just kind of, just general guesses that I.
Well, I'll say I'm very interested in finding out what it would take to get some trees planted in this town, and if it, and for me, I would need to get some quantification on these items, so I'd be able to make a determination whether or not I want to move it ahead of these other things or not. With, I don't have that information yet.
That's up, that's up to how you guys want to direct me to do. Yeah, that's, that would be the next step.
So I think part of the reason we did this is council member Fice wanted to do this urgently, like plant it now, it's kind of planting season. It wasn't in our plan from before. And so, we just want to say, we want to bring things like that to you guys to say, we can't just keep adding to the pile, if you want to add something, what do you want to take away? Or we can do the budget process, which is going to take longer, right? So, yeah, we didn't go out and get detailed prices on this right now, it was before we really worked on it, we wanted to get a sense if the whole council wanted to prioritize this.
Well, and.
You want it more than you want other things, like you'd be willing to give things up, basically.
Well, we kind of put the list of the ones that we are, the budget impact ones up there, because those are similar type of projects, so if you put the trees in, you take one of those out, you know, like that's just time. You know, I mean, just speaking of time for me figuring out what we're going to do versus those projects, so.
Really just to start with three trees in the whole town would take a lot of time and money? No, but that's not how this was brought, you know, it, this started as like a proposal for a tree project through town. Well, I brought it, so that's kind of saying it's like to have a. Trees up and down Main Street. No, I never.
Both talking.
So, I'm sorry if I misrepresented it, and, and I do, and I, maybe I need to write up like a ten-year plan of what my vision is, but I did a significant amount of research and it's, you know, there's just so many benefits, but I was hoping for the short term, just to plant like, three trees, and, and I think maybe I'll just get a citizen group, Tom Vealich, who owns that one lot, is really a proponent, he said he donated a thousand dollars. Um, so yeah, think big, start small, and then the other place I see money is, I, please can we stop changing out the umbrellas? Can we just get a neutral color and change them when they wear out? Because right there, that's six hundred bucks, I'm sure I could buy three trees for six hundred bucks. Sorry to be pissy, but, um, I, I, it just, I think we, it's not, like, I love that you're looking at the whole thing, but I think there's, it would be easy to start small.
Yeah, I think starting small is a good idea, we could just do, you know, do that, you know, we got a volunteer group of people that we worked with, we can hook up with you Susan, and see what we could put together down at that place, Tom, you know, put a project down there maybe, and.
Talk about the parking lot?
At the post office, yeah.
Yeah, if there's water there, so.
If there's water there, yeah.
The active planting, and then there's, it sure doesn't die.
Exactly, exactly, and then, and then start looking at the bigger picture about how we're going to get this thing financed over time and where it fits in the prioritization.
This pic, lower picture right now, is there, is there water in that?
No.
Little pork chop?
I don't think so, and, and there's actually a asshole underneath it.
Bottom.
Yeah, it's a cement bottom, so that would take a lot more.
Well, those weeds are doing pretty darn good there in that picture.
I know, we need shallow root trees, Jim.
So they have to hand water that?
I don't think they hand water it, I think it just kind of grows on its own, it's just native.
And then one more thing, just to be, that I'm really doing this in, with a positive vision, is I just think that it built, will really help build community and help with commerce, and there's, um, so, um, it's not like a malicious intent to prioritize trees.
Why don't you start with a pilot program and see if we could just get some volunteers and plant those two trees by the post office? Start there and then, and then try to grow from there.
Yeah, he said, and he was, he even had an idea, well, let's like have people pick, donate a tree, and yeah, I'll just work on it from a more of a grassroots perspective.
Yep, so we do have this volunteer group, I, I think we do, I think the city wants to, uh, make the decision on the type of tree, because I think, again, we don't want to break the, the road or the sidewalk, that kind of thing, so.
Well, and, you know, the Veolich lot, we wouldn't want one on that corner because of visibility and what we might.
I think we can.
Once a tree grows up, it's on bi-level, I don't think.
Yeah, but it's the trunk, if the trunk gets too big, then you can't see around the corner, it's, it's a, it's a safety thing.
But I think we can do it, you know, police chief thought we could do it.
We, we would, we would talk to the police chief, I mean, I'm sure he, there would be something you could figure out, maybe.
A lot of cities have volunteer tree groups too, which, you know, then we would, if we were in that position, we could think about, okay, what's the policy for planting on city-owned land and then like.
I guess we're talking about that plant, the, uh, planter there on the corner?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, there's no water there, and don't we have plans for a, a sign, a, a, a direction sign there?
Yeah.
We do.
Uh, Mike had something to say.
Mike Kirk in Sutter Creek, I, I would volunteer to be on a tree group. You know, my concern is a lot of times the trees selected are, are, I agree with Tom, you don't want to have things, I've, I've taught an urban forestry class when I was a grad student, and you, you can select the trees that have less, less impact on their. The other thing that may be available to you is when I worked for Cal Fire, they have an urban forestry wing of the organization, and they, they do grants for cities to plant trees. I think when Amy was the city manager, she asked me about that, and, uh, I don't think they ever applied for a grant, but sometimes there's a lot of opportunities for that. But you can kind of get your, your, your foot in the water by just planting a couple of trees, and I agree, you don't have to be too, come by my house someday, I have valley oak forest in my front yard that's never been irrigated.
That's what I would get. There's trees growing all over.
They've never been irrigated, and, and I, I had an instant, a number of years ago before, any year on the council, I would walk up and down Spanish where the new sidewalk was, when it was first built, and there were volunteer valley oak in there, were growing beautifully. And then they got cut down by crews because they were weeds. Instead of building a planter around them and doing something nice and saving them, and I went to the council, why are we cutting down trees that could add to a street, a tree-lined street with native oaks? And again, I've got oaks in my yard, never planted a one, and I should be thinning them out, probably my insurance company will make me do that. But the valley oak are very beautiful, they don't tend to break up the roads, I think they're deep rooted, they grow fast. If you keep planting things like crepe myrtle, crepe myrtle's a pretty tree, they're going to be like this big for twenty years. Do you want tree-lined streets? Do you want shade canopy? You got to look at those species, I will provide you with an urban forestry book that will give you all kinds of trees to tell you what you should be planting, but you've got to go in it with some knowledge, and, and, and before you start throwing things in the ground. And I think you can do it fairly inexpensively. I'll volunteer to be on a tree group, if you can get other people to be on it, I'll be glad to get out there and.
Bring your book.
Okay, but that may be a good way to get started, get a group established, and get a few trees in the ground and get them growing, thanks.
Yeah, I don't know what the resolution would be then, are we asking staff to move forward to do any work on this, or bring it to the volunteer committee, form a community group? Uh, I think Mike's right, um, you know, we can't just go out and plant trees.
I think Susan's done a lot of background, Susan can work with Mike and others and other volunteers, at least we can, we can, you know, run it by staff, of course, before we do anything, and get their approval for the type of tree, but let's get three trees planted over the next sixty days if we can.
Yeah, I'm glad to take that on, and I've done a, a lot of reading, and Sacramento and Davis have really good city tree sites, so I'll throw some of those trees off you again, and, uh, thank you.
Yeah, that'd be great, and then we'll see what, what we need next.
Sounds great, yeah, thanks.
Okay. Uh, mayor and council member reports, Dan?
I'm okay, thank you.
Julia? Jim?
Uh, no.
Susan, did you have something? Nope, no problem. Okay, city attorneys report?
No report.
Future agenda items?
So is that red alert system up and running?
It switched to a new thing.
I think it's, yeah, so the, the county office of emergency services is starting a bunch of meetings because basically have to update their plans. And I think they operate that app. So it's a good time and it's definitely on my radar, so.
Do we attend those meetings or can we indicate that we wanna be a part of it?
They're just starting, yes. We will attend. I think, I'm planning to go. I think Chief O'Connell will go.
Cool. And then you can let us know how that goes and then we can discuss it and take it from there.
Did those alert on the cell phone?
This is, uh, well, this is the emergency service plan for the entire county with city-specific plans. But part of that is communications, so.
Could, could we like, cause I remember there was a woman who talked about a bell or some sort of older system that was, she was hoping to reactivate. Can't remember.
Did you guys ever go look at that siren?
Yeah.
No.
But maybe we could do something more like how the amber alerts come across your phone sometimes, or I don't know how expensive that is.
I think that's what the county OES is talking about. It would be an alert on your, text alert, miss, text message alert.
Yeah.
So that, they're gonna work on that and we're gonna go and you're gonna let us know?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good place to start because every, all this stuff goes through the county, even the, the app.
The phone, our dispatch is gonna go through the county.
What you were talking about and Dominic was, we were, we had a plan, planned, had a date planned and he couldn't, we couldn't make it. Was a siren, which would be totally inappropriate for the incident yesterday or the fire downtown. When, when you've got the fire department there in four and a half minutes and, and you don't just set it off and cause panic.
Having more people on the road would have been very difficult. Yeah. And, but hearing more stories about the Paradise Fire and, and then having heard an evacuation story of the tsunami, if they can do one and it has specifics like that. I mean, there was a woman talking to me the other day and it took her 30 minutes just to turn off her street to evacuate Paradise, so.
So I do think, again, our, our public safety officials make decisions on when to use these systems and when not. This thing with the manhunt, the, during, I, I did get some updates after I talked to you and Julia. And again, I think the police officers felt based on the situation, it was domestic violence. This wasn't somebody, you know, out looking to injure other people necessarily. That, you know, alerting the public in the midst of that manhunt would probably have caused more panic than helped. And it also generates phone calls and then they have to have staffing to, to respond. And so again, based on what they knew about the situation, they, they didn't feel like they should use that system for that kind of event. And. Yeah. Right, so. Yeah, I, I don't know how we address that. It's like, you know, the use of social media and people posting things without knowing all the information. Yeah, it's just a tricky thing.
Sounds like we should, we should, if, bring this on, back on an agenda.
Yeah, this, we're going too far here.
Yep.
I mean, but, but it's certainly a worthy thing to discuss if that's what the council wants to do.
And since these discussions with OES are gonna occur, then appropriate time would be bring it back after they do.
So I think we're at the, the same direction that we, we were. We're gonna go ahead and attend these OES meetings and come back and maybe have to have our own discussion internally about Seta Creek incidents. Okay, anything else to add to the agenda?
The city clerk left one informational report on there, but it was from last year, last month.
It came in late, so it was added to this.
Oh, okay. Any questions on the engineering report? Okay, then we are gonna come out of open session and take a quick recess and go into closed session.